Marine Resources Committee start the thing off.
Evening.
Move on to it.
Yep. Thank you all. Thanks again. We've had a discussion and we would like to put a moratorium on anything coming forward regarding top culture, size, whether the orientation of it in a particular body of water, whether it's in a constricted current or not. So I don't know exactly how we want to write this up or moving forward with it.
First of all, what's been done since our last meeting?
Nothing. Well, got ahold of DMR to ask them the repercussions of if we did a moratorium. If it matters to the state, does it give us any leverage as far as saying no, but you'll find out that that little Whale Boat just got, we got slammed with I don't know how many applications.
Nineteen.
Seems like the state's pretty insistent that we don't have any cards in this game.
Yeah. Well, I think Whale Boat, I think that's all one company under different names.
Yeah. You know, I really feel strongly that we need to identify certain particular fishing grounds, whether it's, you know, sanding lobster and bull raking and, you know, honor those fishing grounds. We have to, like, we have to establish our own criteria. It's as simple as that. And we need to, you know, that criteria should consist of constricted waterways in every bay, every body of water, that's something else we're going to have to identify, and particular fishing grounds. And like, I just truly would encourage bottom culture of shellfish, put them where you would naturally find them. They're just going to create a harmonic balance within that environment, simple as that.
I did drop off, a lot of people have the water classifications that you guys did.
Yes.
You know, and the thoughts of maybe getting together the Harbor and Waterfront Committee, Billy Saxton's here, and more clarification of what's on there.
Yeah, yep.
And updating them.
Yep.
And that will give us more of a leg up with DMR as far as, you know, yes and no.
Yep. And then, you know, this map was devised in 2011, correct?
Yeah.
So we would just be adding to that and identifying other fisheries that do take place within those waters.
Yeah. Well, we've come a long way since 2011.
Yeah.
Your committee has.
Yeah. Now, maybe Camden could add to this, exactly, you know, how we want to write the moratorium up or just, like, just put a moratorium on anything coming forward.
Yeah.
Yep. Sam, you can, oh, want to go up the podium?
Oh, sure.
There's a camera AMW up there.
Hi, guys. Camden Rice, Protect Maine. Yeah, so the process usually is, and we provided our own moratorium, and it basically just says, no aquaculture development for 180 days, and that's on everything. It doesn't affect any existing leases or pending leases or anything like that. And the reason that we, you know, we go with a moratorium is it gives towns that 180 days to come up with their own ordinance if they don't want to adopt ours, and it just, you know, gives you guys time to go through things procedurally, and that's kind of the gist of it. So you guys can, obviously, I would recommend you do what's best for your town, anything you guys want, but I mean, that's kind of what, that's the process that we go forward with, moratorium, then ordinance. So, any questions about that?
Well, no, that makes sense. That's generally the direction you go, but everything I'm seeing from the DMR is that they don't respect our home rule that they have the jurisdiction on beyond the intertidal zone. So what chance do we stand, I guess is my question.
I mean, I'm not going to speak on like a percent based chance, but I mean, I think that, I don't think the town or the state is going to want to challenge a town's ordinance in any case. It's a terrible look for them, especially when you have all of these cases, like countless cases in every town of their regulations, their criteria on aquaculture not working, fishermen and clambers, lobstermen, all being displaced because of that. It's really not, I don't think it's something that, you know, they would take seriously or challenge you on, but I mean, I'm not going to say 100%, but, you know, you have a really good leg to stand on with that, I would say, and that's why we're doing what we're doing.
Yeah, and if I, yeah, if I may add, David, you know, out of respect for the work that our Marine Resources does implementing the manage, you know, what we do in trying to manage our resources, and out of respect for other fisheries in this town, this is a must. We have to.
Worth a try to me, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll poke the bear, I don't care.
Yep.
The, well, what worries me is the DMR will just circumvent whatever moratorium we have. You know, I know there's a, there's a top culture lease looking at over to Bombazine. Will that go through?
I don't know.
Those moratoriums help?
I don't know.
I know, I know it's a problem lease.
Yep. Whereas it's so close to an existing fishery and there may possibly be a fishery lying underneath the proposed site, I can't answer that.
Sam? Yep. Wait, you can lower the microphone.
Hi, I'm Samantha Bohan. I have two LPAs, so I have to renew my lease every year. What happens to me if we have a moratorium on?
Good question.
I then can't renew my lease. I lose everything I have and I've worked for.
I don't know, Camden.
It's only on existing, or, yeah, it's not going to affect any existing.
It's only on new.
Do we know that?
Yeah. Do we know that?
Well, that's how we write it. That's how we write it.
Yeah.
If you're going to talk to up there.
I think the, Allison Hawks, Cundys Harbor, I think the original intention was not to be messing with what's already in place. I think we want to look at what's new, but also, you know, I think we're looking to you guys. Maybe you need to speak to legal and, but I'm also hoping, and I say this a lot, like Harpswell is, we can lead. We don't always need to be asking for permission to do everything. I think that we can say, you know, this isn't right for us, these are the things that we're seeing in our community, and fight for that, be leaders in it.
Well, it's not a matter of being a leader in it. If we do a moratorium and it hurts somebody like Samantha or anybody else with a top culture lease because we did the moratorium and the DMR takes a look at it.
We just said, we just said, no, that's not what we want. We're not talking about her.
He said he didn't, he said he didn't think so.
We, we're talking about what we want. This is what David has brought forth and what we want. We're not talking about DMR or anybody, what anybody else wants. This was his, was to bring forward only new because we don't know what we're doing.
As far as existing, I think the studies that we want to conduct in the future, if we deem what is existing is causing a negative effect with these concerns, and we can prove it, then something will have to be done, but as far as like renewing an existing lease, I don't think we can. I mean, I wouldn't want to.
But it's going to depend on how we write the moratorium.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Well, and how does DMR read that? The people with top cultural leases right now, all of a sudden we do a moratorium, DMR takes a peek at it and says, hey, well, when are they going to renew these leases? So all of a sudden Samantha and a bunch of other people, they're out of business.
Yeah.
That's what I need to know before I recommend any moratorium.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, that's it, yeah, I don't think we do. That's what we got to find out.
I think what, with the moratorium, we're asking for 180 days.
Right.
Right. So Samantha's lease is already, you know, your LPA is already set for this year, right? Right. So you're six, yeah, so I mean, you're six months. Like, we're, we wanted, we need a moratorium for 180 days, even if we went with less so that we can draft a, our own ordinance. So we're not asking for a moratorium for a year or two years to stop everything. It's giving us time to draft an ordinance and come up with criteria that we want to see be allowed in the town.
Oh, yeah, I get that, but I want to protect that lease is already out there. Hers is up November, how about somebody else's up, that's up in July or August?
So like, I, I mean, that's what I'm saying, is it's new application. So she already has an LPA. It's a renewal.
Correct.
It's not a new application.
Is it going to hurt the renewal is the question in the book.
No, well, that's not, we want to write the moratorium so that it's not going to hurt any renewal LPAs or anything like that. The moratorium would be for any new leases coming in, any new application.
No, no, I get that.
Right. So it won't be for any renewals, it's just for new.
I sit on the Harbor and Waterfront Committee, Matt Keel at Cundys Harbor, and I saw these 19 leases that you were speaking to, Kevin, around Whale Boat, and it's blatantly clear what's starting to happen is it's one company, like you said, all of its workers have now come in and applied for LP, limited LPAs, experimental ones, but they're circumnavigating the standard lease process by doing so. They're taking up the same size footprint that a standard lease would, but they're not having to go through that process. This is a prime example of why we need a moratorium. People are seeing, this is, we're getting steamrolled without it. We need to slow things down, take a step back, and come up with an ordinance. We can draft a moratorium and we can write something in it that says, people with existing leases are exempt from said moratorium. You know, I mean, there's language that we can put in this, and what happened in the last two weeks? Like, I thought we were going to do some of this research. So we had these answers when we came to this next workshop. What has been done?
Well, we checked with DMR, what their feeling was, and we can do this, it's not going to say that they're not going to give these leases out.
No, I agree, but I think it takes, like, somebody said before, I mean, we need to take initiative, we need to be the leader, we need to take a stance, and if all of a sudden you get Brunswick, Freeport, you know, you get 10, 15 other towns that follow with us, and then maybe DMR wakes up and says, oh crap, we can't sue every town in the state of Maine, maybe we need to redo our process. But somebody has to be the leader. Let's be the leader.
I want to be the leader in the right direction. I want to make sure we're doing this right.
Yeah.
We have one of the largest wild commercial fisheries landings in the state. That's what we're trying to protect. $38 million in wild fishery landings. We're the leader in that, let's stay the leader in that.
As I said before, Matt, you just want to do it right.
Yeah.
So, and on that note, you know, that's maybe why we should have talked to legal before we got here, to see what we legally could do, but also why we're talking about protecting fisheries, and I want to protect Sam too. I love Sam. I've seen her since she was a baby, and I want to see her family flourish, but I also have a vested interest in this too. When I learn that those oysters are eating the lobsters, that we are now being pushed into a lobster cage.
Anybody in ours?
Okay, can you step into the lion's cage here?
One slide up.
All right. I heard all of the concerns and the fears and everything that people were worried about at the last meeting, and I did a ton of work since then, trying to track down answers, research, you know, multiple places to get information from, and so I collected a bunch of it, I'll share it with you guys. I don't know if you're going to like some of the answers, but I tried to go by specifically what your questions were and then trying to find out what's a rational answer. So the biggest stuff, the first things I wanted to find out was, is it reasonable that oyster farms are damaging larval lobsters and larval clams? And so I ended up talking to Chris Davis, who's been a biologist for decades, he's in the Dammer Scotta, he works for you Maine, he is a fairly high functioning researcher. If this were rocket science, he's a rocket scientist. So he wrote a couple of pages in response to that, pretty straightforward, that all of the research that's been done on filter feeders, the size food that they can fit in their mouths is 2 to 20 micrometers, and lobsters are actually hatched out at eight millimeters, which is basically 1,000 times bigger than what an oyster could take in. So oysters and clams are not eating baby lobsters. That's 100% certain based on the actual science that's out there. I'm not sure how that, if it was like a rumor that got out, or if it was just people were wondering and were asking the question. So there's the answer to that question. Aquaculture is not decimating larval lobsters. As far as larval clams, same thing, those are large particles that are out there, it's not in the food source that most filter feeders are eating. He has a couple pages of answers for some of that, I'll hand this out to you guys, and I got extra copies that people can look at, so that's just based on his information. I also went through the one pager that Protect Maine's Fishing Heritage provided and read all of the stuff. I looked up the three studies that they have because I was curious to find out, like, okay, what do these studies, you know, actually say? And it's kind of important to know when you're just Googling something online, like negative effects of aquaculture, you can pick through and find some, you know, one sentence here or there that might say something, but the actual papers, which I printed and I brought here, are not generally negative in their assessment. You know, the abstracts of them, which again, I'll hand these out to you guys, you can look at them in your own time, the gist of it is that there's no real solid evidence of negative effects, it's more that there's questions out there and there's more research needed. The woman that wrote the study number one, which is basically 85% of what's in this one-page document, actually did more recent work with a bunch of other scientists in Canada, that was just published in December of 2023, and it's a really intensive, technical, well-designed carrying capacity study around oyster farms all around Canada. This is meant to be a national program to do the work to determine if there's any negative effects of bivalve aquaculture. There is not at the time, but the idea is you should be doing these studies to make sure that you don't slide into a place where that's going to happen. So it's definitely something we should be setting up and working on, and there's a whole template already set up by the researcher that they trust if we are interested in doing that. There's a local person, Carrie Byron, that did her PhD work on carrying capacity work in the state of Rhode Island, where they had a booming, rapidly expanding aquaculture industry. She's willing to come in and help us work on that as well. I talked to Coho Bay Conservancy, and if there's any, you know, materials that need to be bought or machinery, they use a flow cam to be looking at the actual phytoplankton and figuring out what's in there, is there larvae, is there other stuff, what are the counts? They're willing to pony up money to help us buy that. So there's, there's interest and support to like do the work that needs to get done. And the other thing we can be doing is, you know, I still, I'm not sure how effective a moratorium vote is going to be based on exactly DMR's opinion. I think we, we get more done if we strengthen our stance and our information that we have on the criteria that are already there, if we clearly map out the fishing grounds, clearly map out the pogue areas, clearly map out the commercially important areas so that that's all there and unquestionable when someone comes to apply for a lease. I think there's probably a lot of areas where there's some, you know, it's the gray area or we don't have it mapped out really clearly, and that's where the kind of wiggle room is for people to slide into areas that we feel are sensitive.
Yeah.
So I am still saying we should be doing the work to build up our strength on the framework that's already there, and that's what's going to help us kind of keep from sliding into too many places, getting put where they shouldn't be, but going head to head and doing a moratorium is going to have unintended consequences. What Sammy didn't finish talking about is, her plan is to go for an experimental lease in her footprint where her LPAs are, which takes years to get to the endpoint, so starting sooner the better for her. That's a new lease, that's a new, completely different application, it's going to be, you know, not the same as renewing an LPA. She is not going to be able to do that if there's a moratorium. Mark Davis, who works with me, he's got LPAs and he's, same thing, wants to transition into an experimental lease. We're trying to do this in the right order, start with an LPA, move up when you're ready, and you know that you've got a good spot and everything works, and you're going to, you're going to block these people from being able to do that with a moratorium unintentionally, just because it's a new lease, it's a new activity within the framework, and I know that's not what you intend to do, but it's going to be very tricky to avoid that, and ultimately, I don't know that it's going to make a difference anyway. I think DMR is going to ignore any moratorium in Harpswell. I think, I think we do better by strengthening our arguments about where our important resources are.
I'm Mark Lucktenberger, Cundys Harbor. I serve on the Marine Resources Committee. I don't have an economic dog in the fight, I just was a Cohog digger and put me through college. That was a long time ago. So I think those are really interesting statements, but I would argue that everything you just said about needing more work and needing more research could also be used to advocate for a moratorium. Thinking about the 19 leases at Whale Boat, the moratorium doesn't go through, or we don't stop the stance opposing that, that's gone. That's never going to, that's never going to change. So I would, I would, and I actually, anecdotally, and the information you cited were interesting, but you could argue that we all want to read those papers, the people. My daughter's a PhD student in shellfish at the University of Washington, she was sending me papers showing that, in fact, while the oysters don't consume, the larva actually gets blocked, and so it dies anyway, even if it's not consumed. So that's a different point of view. All I'm saying is, we don't have the information right now, and that, in my mind, argues for a moratorium as opposed to, it also, I think, there is a political, obviously, a political bent to this. If there are 10 and 15 communities, and we can get state legislators involved, that's what I think an organization like DMR starts to pay attention, because those are people that could influence this.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, not even addressing the science questions and stuff, there's also a bigger question, just about fair amount of acreage per lease, and I think that might be one of the most important things, especially if you want to promote local, small-scale ownership and equity of, you know, our shared waters. It really becomes a problem when you have a huge max acreage of 100 acres per plot, up to 1,000 acres. What's going to stop big companies investing money and starting to buy up smaller leases because they can't compete with the bigger lease in the area, and then they control the market? I think that's one of the bigger things. You know, aquaculture is rapidly developing, it might not be filled up in every single area that you see now, but every single year it's increasing and increasing, so if you guys don't put, you know, a size limit on that locally, then what you're going to see, in my opinion, or at least there's the opportunity there, is basically Walmart farms, where they're going to buy out those large sections, and you have nothing to protect yourself against. And going back to the science and stuff, on those papers, I never said that those were all in one favor or not, and actually on that one paper that I printed out, I even acknowledged the benefits of oyster aquaculture, top culture, all aquaculture in general, if you look at it, because it is true, there are benefits, it's just it needs to be done right. And most of it being done right has to do with the scale, size, and density and location, which is different in every area, and that's why it needs to be done on a local scale. That's why, that's why Harpswell needs to have an input, and every town needs to have an input. And then going back to it, what, I can't remember who said it, but about having 10, 15 towns on board with this and getting more momentum, we're already working with, I don't know, I think it's eight or nine or 10 towns that are in the process of this. You know, Machiasport is, you know, they just sent their ordinance that they built to their town lawyer, and they're getting it approved and looked through for a town vote. Winter Harbor, in the same process. Penobscot actually just voted to pass the ordinance. Unfortunately, there was some paperwork that, you know, wasn't included in the ordinance, so they're going to have to put it back to a vote, but they're pretty much going to vote that in as well, we're pretty confident with it. So we have a lot of towns involved in this because it's an issue seen up and down the coast, so the more support we get for it, the better outcome for everyone in Maine that's a harvester and a fisherman, or anyone that wants to be a small-scale aquaculturist, for example.
Now, long as you're still there. Now, how about Brunswick, Freeport, Phippsburg, West Bath? Have they signed on?
Have not, have not approached West Bath or Brunswick. We did approach Freeport last year, and we were shut down by a concentrated group of people, it was just a handful of people, and that's totally fine. You know, like I said, towns will do what towns want to do, but there has been more interest with Freeport actually this year, and I, I don't know if this is true or not, but I think that one of the harvesters in Freeport actually proposed an idea to start putting regulations in for intertidal aquaculture specifically. I haven't confirmed that, but yeah, that's, that's how we stand with those towns.
Any other towns in southern Maine, or is it all up north?
It's basically all down east. It's really, I mean, it's really a challenge in the southern towns, honestly, and that's why I've, I've had, you know, a pretty optimistic viewpoint with Harpswell, because you guys do seem like the leaders, and working with you specifically, it's been, you know, I've had way more feedback, it's been a lot easier to get things going and have, you know, dialogue around all of the potential problems that I wasn't even aware of. So yeah, I mean, I see that potential there. You guys might be the first people in southern Maine to really, you know, acknowledge that.
No, Harpswell's definitely going to need help from, from the state. What just happened on Whale Boat, they don't sound like good applications anyway, I don't know what's going to happen to them.
Yeah.
I assume nothing's going to happen, but assume anything, I guess. But, you know, at one point, there was a proposal in town here to moratorium on all aquaculture. But what I meant aquaculture, I don't, I don't know what happened to that. Has any other town done a complete moratorium on aquaculture?
Yeah, actually, Waldboro has an ordinance, they did a moratorium then an ordinance where they don't want any aquaculture, and I think they might be reconsidering putting in some more for intertidal just for, for like municipal level, but I'm not sure if that's official, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's official, it's just rumors that I've heard from some people, but yeah, they have, they have an ordinance on all aquaculture in their town.
Thank you, Camden. If I may add, Kevin, Darcy, you know, you just ensured us that oysters aren't capable of physically ingesting lobster larvae and all other livei, but, so are you denying that what they capture in their gills, which is much larger in size, and it is all larval species in their larval state, after they capture them in their gills and they sort out what they can ingest, are they expelling all that life, all that larval life, are they expelling it back into the water alive or dead? Are they expelling it in a form of pseudo feces where everything is dead, or are they expelling it back out live, back in the water column?
No, the stuff that's too big to even get in there is not entering the oyster, it's not.
It stays outside their gills, like?
It stays outside the gills, it won't enter and fit in there. That's what Chris was talking about.
Oh.
I brought this question, oh, sorry.
You know, that, that level of shellfish biology isn't my specialty, so I didn't know. That's why I wanted to ask someone, like, okay, like, how does this work, and is this possible, and do we need to be testing for this, and how would we figure this out? And, you know, he laughed out loud when I asked the question, you know, we need to know if aquaculture is impacting larval lobsters. And he's like, there's no physical way a baby lobster that's just hatched out of an egg is going to get sucked in or stuck or ingested by any bivalve shellfish, oysters, clams, anything. It's just, they're too big, they're not going to enter. And then the other stuff, he has notes in there, which, like I said, I'll pass out to you guys what his opinion was. He's like, the larval, other species of larval shellfish, they're not the preferred thing that oysters want, you may end up having some sorted out, he's like, but if there was a, if there was an impact and larval shellfish were getting eaten by aquaculture or wild stuff for that matter, it's like you, there would just be a, you wouldn't see shellfish existing, you'd have an ecosystem-wide impact on stuff getting eaten, and that's not, you know, he gets into it a little more deeply, which I'll let you guys, you know, he left his email, you guys can ask him more questions. That's not my, my specialty, but I really wanted to find out for sure, like, what's the deal with lobsters, because that's a really important concern for people, and if it's something we needed to worry about, I wanted to be able to do the work and figure out how to look for it, but if it's not a concern, we can use those resources to look at the stuff that we are still worried about, so.
All right, well, so Camden, that's, that's a conflicting study based on the one that you found, correct?
Yeah, in that study, actually, it wasn't even looking at specifically lobster larvae, and I don't really know much about lobster larvae, other than when it's in relation to muscle farms and that interaction, and that's not even about consumption, but with, you know, the clams and stuff like that, they definitely are small enough, from the study that I looked at, to not be consumed, but to be taken in and then filtered out, and what happens is they're, you know, deposited as pseudo feces, which, they're still alive in that pseudo feces, by the way, but it's a clump that actually just falls straight to the bottom because the density is so high that the water current, you know, it's, it's so dense, it's just going to sink to the bottom, it's not going to, you know, spread out in the natural setting if the water currents push that along.
Yeah.
So that, I see that as being a problem, but honestly, I personally don't think that the larva consumption is the biggest issue. I think it's an issue that should be considered and looked in, looked into, but I think the biggest issue, and it does actually indirectly affect larva, is the calcium carbonate and acidification in the water. You know, and there are studies even coming from the Dammer Scotta River, I have it pulled up on my phone right here, and I just found it. up on my phone right here, and I just found it a couple weeks ago, that specifically says, if you get to a certain point where you're having too many oysters, too big of a farm, too big of an impact, it's going to, instead of the positive benefits of actually the re-uptake of carbon dioxide into calcium carbonate in the water, and it's a positive effect at the small-scale level, it actually does the opposite, and will decre, or increase the acidity of the water, which, you're not going to have larvae surviving in acidic water. I think that's the main, in my opinion, from what I've seen, that's probably the most important factor. And then not to mention, there's not a lot of calcium carbonate in the water supply anyways, and bivalves need that calcium carbonate to build their shells, it's really important. So you're going to have, you know, top culture that has, you know, the priority of getting that calcium carbonate in the water in a specific area, they're taking priority over the wild harvest, and I just don't think that's right, and it should be looked into and considered. And that's what I consider to be the biggest impact, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Camden.
You might as well stay up there.
Yeah, so, you know, that, that concern too, David, about the top culture versus bottom culture thing, I was interested in, and the, the giant study that I found by, you know, the study number one author that you guys had, addressed that, it's a, I'll, I'll give you guys a copy, it's like over a hundred pages, so I made two copies, because I don't have enough printer ink to do more than that, but it's basically, they did an entire study that assessed where is the phytoplankton, where is the chlorophyll? You know, an oceanic environment is really complicated, and there's a lot of flow and movement everywhere. When you talk about how much phytoplankton is out there, it's millions of cells per liter, that's what's there. Like, as an example, saying that, you know, a surface culture farm, or any aquaculture farm, is going to use up all the food and starve something upstream of it, it's literally like saying, the oxygen's coming into this room through the door, and the people sitting here on the edge are going to use all of the oxygen up and suffocate people on that end. There's so much food that we're nowhere near that level of, you know, taking it away from another component in the ocean. It's really well mixed, and if you read the study that she did, they had to do a lot of like vertical toes, horizontal toes, they had to do all sorts of sampling in order to capture all the different conditions, where the food was, where the phytoplankton were, where the zooplankton were, because it, it's well mixed and moves around, and it's important to check all of the spots, so that they could figure out if there were problems, if they were seeing depletion somewhere, and they weren't, but their recommendation is, like, if you want to keep an eye out for that, and make sure you don't get into one of those situations, here's a sampling strategy that's going to cover you, it's going to give you the information you need to know if you follow it. It's really well done, they did statistics on how they set up their sampling spatially and temporally, it's, it's a great study that she did, so you guys may want to take a look at it, and it's something I think it's worth us pursuing, even whatever else you guys decide to do, if you really want to know what's going on with the interaction with, you know, wild shellfish and aquaculture and the carrying capacity of the bays, I think it's worth doing, it's a good project worth doing.
Yeah, that's odd, considering there's, like, Damerskata River, wild resource ceased to exist in the Damerskata River, yeah, there must be something else at play there.
I mean, yeah, it's also a different water body, I mean, there's other stuff going on. This was stuff in areas of Canada where there was way more aquaculture than what we have, also lots of wild harvests, I mean...
Yeah, yeah. See, there comes a point where there just simply isn't enough to go around, I would think, you know, eventually, but, yeah, so.
The other thing that Chris points out, because he did address that in some of his answers, is that, you know, what people seem to be forgetting is that primary production and phytoplankton, they replace themselves really quickly in areas. You've got bays where there's retention, and it's not like, oh, there's food sweeping in from offshore, and then it gets washed out with the tide. It's reproducing within the bay all the time. Actually, the number two paper that you guys had in the talking points talks about how biofowling communities actually improve primary production and generate more food in the area where it is. It talks about, you might want to think about not cleaning off the biofowling on oyster farms, because it's actually providing enhanced primary production, so it's, it's a very complicated system, and nothing that I've seen so far is pointing to food deprivation or areas being depleted, but they do have ways for us to be on it ahead of the game, and make sure we don't get into that situation. And that's what I'd like to see us do.
All right, decent. Thank you.
Don't, don't go too far, because I actually had questions about the studies. Do we have any study, I assume this is the Chris Davis that owns oyster farms in Damerskata? So, I mean, it's kind of a partial study, by the sounds of it, you've got a guy owning oyster farms, doing studies on oysters, of course he's going to look for the data that helps, helps the industry. I do agree, though, that we do need to do studies, and I think we could use that hundred-page study you're talking about as a model to do a similar study here in Harpswell, because I think we can both acknowledge that, that study, mate, was done somewhere else, and Harpswell is not the same as Canada, Damerskata, it's, the ocean is different wherever you go, so we can put a moratorium on, start doing the study, you know, and we, like I've said before, I don't want to stop people like Sammy, we can word the moratorium, so existing leases can even expand into an experimental lease, there's ways to do this, we have a town lawyer, but I think we need to do some studies specific to Harpswell, and have neutral parties, people that aren't lobstermen or oyster farmers, you know, there's plenty of scientists out there, you know, that are interested in this stuff.
I agree with you on all of that. We're on the same page here.
Thanks, Matt.
And actually, Darcy's offered to do a study of, of the fishing areas, between the lobstering and the fogging.
No, just map them, I'm not going to, I will map your fishing area.
... authority, or whether that's by trying to, you know, perform through the legislature in some way that, that gives the town more authority in the process, I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, one of the areas we're looking at is the water classification, which a lot of towns don't do, and we haven't touched it in ten years, but we've been talking about it the last two weeks, Paul and I.
And, and David.
Yeah.
I think David did the, you do the last one we had?
Yeah.
Can I come in?
No.
Can we talk about it now?
Yes.
Yeah.
It just seems like it could be a really simple way of, of moving legislation forward, I mean, rather than having to try and propose legislation that deals in the specifics of, you know, you know, this being bad, this being good, you know, trying to move something forward that just granted towns with, you know, shellfish ordinances, management programs, a, a fine say in the process, it just seems to make sense.
We, well, we do have one of the better shellfish programs in the state, you know.
Yeah.
Most, you know, frankly, thanks to David.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, obviously, we, you know, we give input on every lease application, I mean, the town can, but there's just, it doesn't seem to always translate into things happening in the way that we want it to, so.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you.
Thanks.
You know, I'll admit that I'm not a scientist, but I can't help but think that if you give preference to a single species, it's going to upset the balance of the ecology, and that's really what, what drives all of this.
Oh, yeah, of course it is, and you're taking, you know, top culture is all about taking it out of its wild setting, where it's evolved to be at harmony with, with the, you know, the environment, now you're setting it in that favor, top culture, where all this life lives, how are you not going to disrupt something? So I think we should implement a hundred-and-eighty-day moratorium, and that'll give us the time to, you know, construct our own criteria, that'll give us time to renew this map, based off, you know, certain fisheries and where they take place, and the other couple topics.
The, out of curiosity, does anybody here have a pending top culture lease, other than Sammy?
Back in the back, in the right.
Does everybody here have, have a lease or LPA?
Who knows?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Can I ask?
Hi, Jay McCray, Great Island. A question for the young man, talking about the moratoriums. Has anybody applied for a lease or an LPA in Waldaburu? I'm wondering about the state's reaction.
I do not know that, off the top of my head. There hasn't been one implemented there, so.
I thought you said they, they had put a moratorium.
No, no, there hasn't been a lease or an LPA implemented there.
Okay. Well, my point is, it's, as I said last time, I think, you're talking about state waters, you're talking about, the department has said they, they wouldn't honor it. I think there's a lot of good ideas here, I think the energy could be harnessed to do really good work, but I think, you know, it's not, there's a lot going on, it's climate change, we deny it or not, there's acidification, there are all sorts of things going on. So we don't know what's going on. So the science is important, I'm not a scientist either, but there are scientists out there. And I think to, is, is anybody here on the shellfish, the aquaculture advisory council of the state? Because that would be a proactive way to...
On the shellfish advisory council.
Okay, so same idea, but for aquaculture.
No.
And though the state depends on the advisory councils to give them feedback, doesn't mean they always do exactly what you want, but they do expect feedback. So when they're talking about making changes, they bring it to the advisory council, the advisory council has a chance to weigh in. The state is, the legislature does oversee all the departments, including marine resources, so I think the suggestion about getting current legislators involved would be a great approach. Get them active, get them interested, get them to be looking out for their constituents, who is everybody here? So I think to be constructive, I don't think the state would respect a moratorium, they've said they won't, so, but there's so much good idea here, so let's harness it.
So, trying to like keep that momentum going with like, let's be proactive and do some good stuff, one of the things I was going to recommend is that I think it would be worthwhile for Harpswell, we all know that we want to go in this direction and figure out, all right, where do we want to put, you know, our criteria, how do we want things to look? I think it would be worthwhile to consider setting up an aquaculture working group specifically for that, with David, with one or two oyster farmers, some lobstermen, Paul...
How about you?
Well, maybe, but to flesh out all these details and get going on this stuff, like, figure out, all right, where, where can we strengthen areas that we think are weak? Where can we focus work that we think needs to get done? How, where do we get the resources? Let's get that set up and get it going. When you get data and information and hard stuff all actually done, and are able to hand that off to a legislator to sponsor a bill for you, or to the department to make your case, that's when you're going to get some traction and some like, results here. So the sooner we get going on that, the better it's going to be for Harpswell, and I think if we just, let's set up a work group and get going on it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Hi, I'm Tate Nygaard from Kewalk Bay Conservancy, and, you know, obviously, we're hearing everybody's concerns about this, and very much, we're on the same end, we want what's best for everybody, we want what's best with the environment, want what's best to work in waterfront, and, you know, talking about resources and getting this research done, it sounds like this is what needs to be done, and we have the availability to do this with the resources that we have. We have students every single year coming, we have accreditation through UMaine, and we have partnerships with GMRI, and the resources to get research like this done, and it's answers that we need for this, and obviously, and it's one of those things where, yeah, we have an oyster farm too, but we want what's best, and if it's true what, you know, people are concerned about, we'd be the first people to be amending for bottom culture. We don't want to harm the environment in any single way, and we have the resources to get this kind of research done, where you can get the answers that everyone wants to get. So it's one of those things where we'd be happy to work with anybody we can, and try and get, you know, on board with the Shellfish Committee, and try and help out with this, and just see, get the answers that everyone's just, you know, hoping for, so.
So, first, I want to say, I've been trying to listen hard, and very much appreciate the, the concerns, the sense of urgency that you have, the fact that we're talking about aquaculture and its impact on a number of fisheries, not just the shellfish, and it's a big deal for Harpswell, there's no question about that, and I think we would all agree with that. It sounds like, as we're having this conversation, that folks are agreeing on the research and the information gathering and the putting together of our case for what needs to be different than it is now. Let me just check that, are we agreeing on that? Okay. And I think the notion that that then can lead us to having a legislative strategy, I don't think we should wait until we finished with that before we talk to our legislators, I think they should know what we're concerned about now, and start getting on board with us, and help us in whatever way they can. And if we agree on that, that's, that's another step to take, but it doesn't wait till we're done with the research. I think the question of the moratorium, it sounds to me like it's a symbolic action, that it doesn't, isn't going to make a difference, positive difference with DMR, can have potential negative consequences, and I would not be comfortable agreeing to a moratorium without looking at those possible negative consequences, recognizing that we have shellfish aquaculture farmers here in town who are stakeholders as well, and that we need to be sure that what we do and how we do is going to be in such a way that it does... is going to be in such a way that it does not have a negative consequence on Samantha and others like Samantha. So that one, I think we need to look at a little bit harder and figure out what the benefits would be other than feeling good because we've said so, which may be good. I mean, if we don't have negative consequences, great. But if it's in any way going to harm the ultimate goal of getting more control, as I think it was Chris said, over what happens vis-à-vis the fishing and the farming of fishing in Harpswell, that we want to be careful that we do it in a way that we don't put roadblocks up in front of ourselves as we go forward. So not saying no to moratorium, but I'm saying we need to look at that a little bit harder before I am ready to say yes.
I tend to agree with that. I don't want a moratorium to be simply a knee-jerk reaction. Needs to, we need to have some thought behind it. It needs to be going in some direction.
Well, what are we supposed to do? We've got 19 pending right now. Next week, we could have another.
I think, oh. Can we not protest those 19? Can we not take action on that specific, very urgent situation?
Well, that's just it. We would have to, we would fall back into fishery identification area where these proposed sites are, you know? One of these 19, you could, there goes fishing ground for a fogey fisherman or lobster fishermen. These, you know what I mean?
I do. I don't know how to do it, but I don't think that can wait for 180 days. That a moratorium isn't going to stop it, I don't think. So what can we do to stop that?
I haven't seen the application yet. I don't know if it's top culture, bottom culture or... Paul hasn't even had a chance to look at it.
So in terms of the moratorium, I mentioned this before, too. Home rule, actually, that law was upheld in a Bar Harbor case recently. And it had something to do where the town didn't want, they wanted to limit the amount of cruise passengers coming from the cruise ship. So that is something that can be upheld. It's not, it's not just, it's not just a feel-good thing. It can be upheld for sure. And the other point that I wanted to make about like leasing or the leasing process and the, you know, the power that townspeople have now, it's a public hearing. And, you know, that's where we've seen failures and that's why I'm up here today and what I've been doing for the past couple, you know, year and a half or so. You know, you're allegedly allowed to go to a public hearing and give your voice and your opinion and that's supposed to ensure that your rights aren't being trampled on by these leases. That's not what we've seen. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes they listen to fishermen that say that they are fishing that ground, maybe not all the, all year, but maybe seasonally or maybe even all year. And then the leases are still granted. That's the problem. It doesn't seem like, you know, you guys are being protected, the fishermen are being protected anywhere with these leases. And that's why the moratorium is, you know, pretty crucial in my opinion. And it can be upheld.
Point well taken. What I didn't talk, mention is during the moratorium, the recommendation has been that we build an ordinance. The ordinance is the home rule piece. And I think we need, I think we need to not, keep that on the table. Definitely keep that on the table. But again, that is going to take time.
And would it be written that the moratorium wouldn't extend to pending top culture leases?
It's already written, it's already written like that unless you want to transfer from an LPA.
You might just stay up there. Yeah.
Want a chair? Yeah. So anything new, that's what it stops. And so if you have an LPA, you're renewing that LPA. It's not going to stop that. I can't answer if you're transferring from an LPA to a new lease. My guess and what I would say, just to be safe, is that it wouldn't cover that and it would block that. And so if you have people that are being affected by that, I mean, obviously, you're going to want to protect them, but it's all about protecting, you know, the majority over the few. And maybe you can work around and maybe, the best thing I would say is put the moratorium in if you guys want it and then immediately get to work on the ordinance and try and get it fleshed out as soon as possible so you're not interfering with anyone that has pending leases or want to transfer to an existing lease or a new lease, so.
Yeah, the point of a moratorium is to give you some time to do homework and develop an ordinance.
Thank you, Cambie.
Anybody else?
So where are we?
Well, see, proverbial pickle. I'm against a moratorium, but I've worked with David for 10 years and I usually take his advice and so.
So let me just ask a question. Do we need a moratorium in order to develop an ordinance?
No, no. But what happens is if someone smells an ordinance coming, a lot of folks will try to jump in ahead.
Yeah.
But if we can't stop anything with a moratorium?
Yeah, we don't know.
Okay.
You know, one way to look at it, if we, all right, let's say we do the moratorium. We can let DMR the trouble we're in right now with these 19 leases that popped up, plus there are eight more weren't there last week. The 19 weren't the limit. You know, let's face it, Harpswell's got, you know, we're more shoreline than anybody and so we're pretty attractive. Let's do it this way. Let's see the language of the moratorium. Get it to us. Have the attorney look at it. We'll look at it.
That is the way to do it.
Let them take a peek at it and then.
Come back as soon as we get illegal.
Come back as soon as we get legal.
How do you guys feel about setting up a work group next year?
Totally, totally.
I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to do a moratorium without.
We don't do a moratorium without setting up a committee, setting up the process for doing it. I don't even who our liaison to the legislature is anymore since you got done. We haven't heard from.
You're asking who they are?
Yeah.
It's Cheryl Golick is the representative and Maddie Daughtry is the senator. And I would, I think a working group's a great idea and I would invite them. Make sure they come. I think they would. And I don't know if the town has talked to the state about the 19 leases, but I would certainly do that.
Well, that just happened.
Are those leases or LPA? Well, LPA's, the town does have some say in, more so than leases. So it's, I don't think, I think there is action to be taken. So whoever's taking this, well, I would be happy to help with legislative process. I'm very interested in what you're doing and what the health of all the fisheries. So I'd be happy to help with that if I can. Meanwhile, I'm not actively in the legislature, so I can't put forward legislation, but I know how to do it.
You could be an advisor.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do whatever.
Thank you.
All right.
So working group.
Working group, get a copy of the moratorium language, get it to the attorney and take it from there.
So this working group would consist of, Dave? Jay, you want to be on the working group?
I just, I have some input for this and I can't not say something right now, but we asked, we asked, we let you guys a little while ago to set up like a committee of this essentially, which would be fishing group all across town and you guys said no.
No, we didn't say no.
You said you didn't want a new committee, but you're making a work group. So whatever, I'm just here to say that you are. And I would hope that you're going to put all representatives of fishing groups on it and not just be handpicking people you think should be on it. We want some real work and research. I'm disappointed that we're here two weeks later and you guys should have done all this work two weeks ago.
No, I fully intend to have representation from lobstering, from everything that we've got going on here. So that would only make sense to have all that input.
Within this working group, as far as identifying and mapping out the rest of the town, you know, it would be nice to, some lobstermen, maybe some fogey fishermen, harvesters. And yeah, anyone else, any other interested? Yeah, so, yeah, gallop in, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, guys.
So Paul, do you need any, any more direction at this point to work with folks?
If anyone would like to be on this working group of choice, let us know.
Oh, in the back. Oh, one head up there.
Would it make sense to have any oyster farmers in the working group too?
Okay. Any stakeholder.
So I'm Max Burtis and I've been operating an LPA for the past six years in Harpswell that I'm looking to transition to a standard lease. So I'd like to serve on the working group too.
Jay, put your name in.
Thank you.
And I think with the generous offer from the Cohog Bay folks, I don't see the individual. Let us know how you would like to be involved in this project.
We have interns all summer long, are very eager to do research and we're working to get them accredited so most of the research could be maybe published at some point, further, you know, doing that kind of thing. And it's just a matter of, I think we're all trying to pull on the same end of having a better environment. We want to be a part of it, so.
Okay.
Anyone that would like to be part, put your name at the front desk out here with Tina. We'll make a list and let you guys. You know, let's get together.
All right. I guess we're good then.
Thank you all.
Thanks.